All set?
All set.
Okay, call the meeting to order then. Justice. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I do have some information on the, I went to an RSU finance meeting.
And I didn't attend the meeting, but I do have a comment to make in reference to the RSU 21.
Well, I think Keith, probably we should add the meeting we had earlier this evening. I think it got voted before relative to the issue.
Do you want me to put it under new business?
Last five.
Okay.
What was that?
It's the, we met with the school officials today to discuss the memorandum of understanding between the rec department and the school for the before and after school program.
Excellent.
Okay, with those adjustments, most to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Public forum, Jack, do you have anything for us? Okay, anybody else? Moving on. Move over the minutes, November 8.
We don't have them here, do we?
You, you have the minutes that were in your original packet?
I forgot to read them.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Most to approve is made in second and minutes of November 8th, all in favor. Okay, committee and board reports, Delma, finance.
Yes, I went to the RSU finance committee meeting on Wednesday, November 10th. First thing that they did, and matter of fact, most of the meeting was taken up by a meeting with the auditors. And the audit, they haven't actually received the written audit report, but from the auditors, they have a very clean report, it was unmodified. And they had a long, it was a long meeting with the auditors. And the auditors have noticed that one of the changes in the audit, the student activity fund has been moved to a different area of the audit. I mean, everything was fine there, it was just moved. They are looking at cybersecurity with annual training and reports. And the changes were for the general fund because of all the COVID funds. They spent a lot of time going over all of the, the funds to make sure that they complied with all the government rules and regulations for the COVID funds. The enterprise fund now only has food service in it. And they looked at the schedule for long-term liabilities, which other pension plans. Everything they looked at came out, came out clean, no issues.
Good to hear.
As reported by the Seacoast online, I don't know if you've heard, but there are recall efforts being put forward to recall Art LeBlanc and Tim Stanford. Those were supposed to be, signatures were supposed to be submitted last week to the town of Kennebunk, I don't know if they were or not, but that's coming right out of Seacoast online, so I don't want to update the board on that, that's all I got.
Okay. Keith, transportation.
Yes, prior to me, in between my absence from the town office, we had, we had an issue that occurred up at the transfer station, I think it was on a Saturday. What I understand, the, prior to that Saturday, we had a local contractor, transfer, a trash vendor who had notified his customers that he was no longer picking up trash in, in Arundel. And consequently from that, we, we had a huge influx of trash that showed up on a Saturday at the transfer station and the, the employees from Casella at late in the day decided to not take any further trash from Arundel residents and turned a bunch of people away. So I spoke to the Casella management prior to my departure and explained to them that that is totally unacceptable, that we're going to have to come up with a plan to ensure that that never happens again. And consequently to that quick conversation, I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning with Casella representatives, plus with the, with Roger and myself, to try to iron out specifically what we're going to do if this, this occurs again. From, from what Roger was describing when I spoke to him, evidently they were using one of our compacters for recyclables. So instead of putting recyclables in an open container and keeping the trash to the two compacters we have, some recyclables were going into one of the compacters and consequently when the time came and it was full, they didn't take any more trash. So I've already told them about that, the, the maintenance head of Casella has already made a change to that, so that is supposed to go away. So the trash containers that are the compacters will be for trash only. And the recyclables will go in one of the open containers when it comes. The other issue that we're, that we're having, and we're probably going to issue some new transfer station stickers with new dates on them. Casella management indicates to me that they have a gentleman who comes in every Saturday and they believe he's a contractor from Kennybunk, who comes in with a bunch of demo and drops it off and he's got a sticker, he's got a punch card. Now whether or not he has a sticker on his truck, I don't know, but he has a punch card, he's getting the card punched and he's leaving that debris with us. So they know who he was and the last conversation I had on a Saturday morning on my drive up to Hunting was that they were going to put a stop to that gentleman from, from depositing his trash. So those are the issues we have. I was, I had a series of calls on, on my return to work on Wednesday before I left, indicating their displeasure and what was happening, I apologized to our residents, ensured them that that wouldn't happen again. And so we'll try to get the rest of it resolved tomorrow. So I don't know if you folks are experiencing it, I know that some of you do go to the, to the transfer station on Saturdays, it seems to be Saturday was the day that everything hit. If you experienced it, I'd just like to hear your comments too, but we, you know, as I said to them, we're taking people's trash, even if we have to put it on the ground or get a public works garage to come in, personnel to come in and take care of it, we're taking people's trash. They're not taking it back home to deposit it another day. So hopefully we resolve that issue.
Yeah, just.
I was, I was late on Saturday, I want to say it was like 3:00, 3:30. That's the busiest I've ever seen the transfer station this past Saturday, especially that late in the day. I waited probably all 10 minutes just to, in line around the, around the building.
Okay.
Just to get out front to unload my own, my trash. I actually wondered why it was so busy, but I guess that makes sense if a local.
Yeah, there's a local contractor who, if Phil and I talked, spoke a little bit about a couple of subjects on Friday before I left on vacation and Phil indicated that this gentleman was from Limerick who was picking up this, was contracting commercial pickup and he was able to pick up a town closer to himself in Limerick to make the trip down less feasible for him to take Arundel's trash. So he notified his, his customers that he no longer pick up the trash. So I think there's a scramble there to try, for those people to find somebody else to pick up their trash. Now, really, quite frankly, the only game in sound is Casella. You may, you may contact, like if you're over in, in Wells, I can't remember the name of the company, but.
Oceanside.
But they're all owned by Casella now, Casella owns them all. So you're actually contacting Casella to pick up your trash. So we'll have a conversation and see how that's going, maybe they can shed some light if they have new customers now from Arundel and try to get an end to that. But that's what happened. And Roger and I talked about it, we may want to talk about it during the budget season, whether or not we think that we need a third day at the transfer station. You know, preferably, I think if, if we could get Casella to agree to it, I think it'd be a Saturday, Sunday thing. Folks are home on Sunday, that may be, you know, the best alternative during the week. You know, unless they get out of work early or something to that nature, they're not going to go, but that Saturday, Sunday may be something that we could do. And we haven't, we haven't shut the door yet on trying to get curbside. We're still working on that, Casella has our mapping, but they've sort of just, sort of put it aside right now. And I think COVID probably did more damage to that at this point than them actually looking at it and trying to figure out what it would cost us. So that's still out there and we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, it was posted on, on social media, you know, a couple of comments about, hey, we lost, you know, where can we go? And, and it said, bring it to the transfer station and knew right off the bat that was going to raise, raise havoc.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
I didn't go that day, but I, I heard the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, but so nobody's still checking residency that I could see.
No, okay.
I mean, nobody's ever, I mean, I got the sticker on the truck, but.
They're not checking it.
Nobody comes and checks to see. I mean, I've seen, and they may be from the cottages, but I've seen New York plates and.
Yeah.
Out of state plates all the time up there.
Yeah.
As I said, maybe they're from the cottages and that's fine, but.
Right, they got to have that, yeah. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I've got an older sticker, it's outdated and they never check, it's just sitting on the dash of my truck and they don't. Right, all, all of our stickers are out of date right now, so we may want to refresh that because, because we, we did them for a two-year period, but then we found we had so many of them left that we just sort of extended it and would mark it on the sticker. But I think it's time to maybe change the color of the sticker and reissue new stickers to, to folks so we can sort of get that under control. But I think we're finding that we're getting a lot of people from out of town continuing to use our transfer station.
How do they get tickets? How do they get the punch cards?
Don't know, they may have a resident come in who, who, and gets three or four punch cards and they pay him for them and next thing you know, they're running up there getting their card punched and dropping their trash.
They can get a punch card right there, right?
A check for 20 bucks.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That doesn't help.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotten it there before, I've had, I wrote a check, got it right there because my card ran out.
Yeah.
Well, my neighbor had the trash pickup, the one that said they weren't doing it in town anymore. And I told him he had to pop to the town hall and get a, get a punch card so that he could bring his trash up. He and Charlie usually do it together, so.
Sure.
They don't take cash, but they'll take a personal check.
Yeah.
I'll make sure and tell him to pop on a Wednesday.
Okay, Gilliam Field.
Yes, you know, last, I think it was during the, I think it was November 10th during the charter review committee meeting, I had three board members here and there seemed to be a, an urgency for the Little League who was doing some, using their, I think they have about $11,000 of money to do a complete renovation to the Little League ball field at Gilliam Field and they wanted to put turf down. So I was able to receive three approvals from the folks that are at the charter review committee to, to allocate $4,000 if they needed it to put turf down. As, after that vote, we discovered that the, the turf contractor felt that it was a little too late to be putting turf down in that if we did not have proper irrigation for it, it would be a problem. So in lieu of putting turf, they went back to just, as I understand, they're going to overseed and, and reseed it and hopefully in the spring, we'll have some grass there. The status of playing on it next year is still up in the air, but if you hadn't, if you haven't had the chance to go over there and look at it, the work that's been done is first rate, it's first rate work. The infield is completely done, leveled, it's all dirt now, they, they rototilled and ground up the outfield and got that all cleaned up and reseeded all of that. And I, I am just totally pleased and I know that Phil won't say anything, but Labby Construction donated a ton of time and equipment, trucking expertise to get a lot of that material there for the Little League to do their work. Matt Tashrow was there in the days that I went by for the Little League, making sure that things got done and couldn't be happier for the effort that was put in. So I think we're on the right track for the Gilliam Field. I think that when we get to the budget season, we're going to have to look at putting some money aside for a fertilizing program and reseeding program as we move forward for the remainder of the field as well as that ball field. We've had the water tested again and it's, the last test that came in, it was marginal. And what the, what John Maheska indicated to us after the test was that it would be to our advantage to maybe take a small space in the, in the spring and water it with the water from the well, to see if it's going to have an adverse effect on that grass. So obviously we'll do it on a piece of grass patch that's not on the playing field and then monitor it in, the thought is if it's not having adverse effect, then we've got a well and water that can be utilized for an irrigation system to take care of that field and, and do it. So it's a, a little bit of a work in progress, but I think we've got folks that are thinking about it logically to try to come up with a solution. And as I said to Roger today, even if we have to put in a small filtration type system to treat that water before it gets spread on the, on the field, then that may be money well spent to, to ensure that we've got adequate water to irrigate and take care of those fields. So that's where we are right now, I don't think we're going to be using the $4,000 that you approved. If I find that Matt thinks he's going to use it, I will come back to you folks again because the purpose of your vote was to put turf down and we did not do that. So at this point, we're not using the four.
Okay.
Where, where is the well? I don't recall where the well is.
I think it was drilled right near.
The snack shack.
Right near the house, the snack shack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's right near the snack shack. I, I can't remember if it's to the right or left of it.
To the left of it, remember we used to have a batting cage.
Yeah, right.
It's right there.
Oh, it's funny, I don't, I don't recall that.
Yeah.
Good, thank you Phil, by the way, appreciate your efforts. I think that's awesome.
I'd like to say too that Parkland Landscape had sent six people over there to work with us, with the whole group.
Nice. That's super, I didn't even, I didn't realize that they sent that many people, thanks Phil, appreciate that. I'll probably send, you know, a thank you to both your company and the, and the other one for the, for the work that they did, very appreciative. The next item I have is the demo estimates for the removal of the Old Town Hall. And again, a week ago, Fri- Friday of last week, both Phil and I sat down, I had Phil come in and, and chat with me about a couple of subjects and this certainly was one of them that came up because I was curious as to his, his opinion as to why we didn't have enough money. And as he explained to me, and I won't speak on his behalf, I'm sure he's capable of speaking on his own, but I'm, I'm figuring, remembering what we talked about and what it was is that he felt if we used the total amount for the asbestos mitigation that's been estimated, that that would not leave enough money in there to complete the project of tearing down the building, removing the foundation and getting all that stuff back to virgin land, you know, grass seed and, and grass growing. So in lieu of that, we had several conversations and I think we agreed that we felt that a $50,000 number would be far more appropriate. So what I did is I updated my memo, dated it today and added a contingency of 10 grand into the estimate to make it 50. And I think unless he changes mind, I think he thinks that 50 may be a good number for us to go on.
Did you change your mind, Phil?
No.
Okay.
If you spent $24,000 on asbestos removal, that would leave you $25,000 for the actual demo, that shouldn't be enough, in my opinion.
Okay, so and some of the excavation work of filling in is going to be done by the public works, right? Well, we're going to do the filling in of the hole once the, once the foundation itself is removed. Our plan is to remove the complete foundation and not just bury it. So we'll get it out of there and, you know, hopefully Public Works has the necessary material to go in the hole and concede and get, get some grass grown there. So I, I don't think there's any other, you know, I don't think there's any other items to do with this other than to decide, the board needs to make a decision whether or not you want to take this to a special town meeting and discuss this subject by itself or do you want to hold it and put it on our annual town meeting warrant as a, as a standalone warrant article sometime in June when we, when we take action there. So that, that ultimately is your decision, I, I think we're, we could be prepared one way or the other to, to do this project.
Any thoughts?
I'd rather not wait till June.
Me neither, I think we ought to do a special town meeting and get this approved at least and then, but then we got to go out to bid, so it's, the time is just going to.
Yep. Okay. All right, let me, let me get with the town clerk and we'll figure out what, what is a good time to have a special town meeting and I'll report back to you at your next business meeting as to what we think may be appropriate.
Yeah, we can just do it coordinated with one of our meetings, right? Like, like we've done before.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Annual work with the budget board to.
Yeah, we'll have to get the budget board involved and tell them what we're doing and all that kind of stuff and get their, get their approval.
Okay, and the business, the first item is discussion on development of a purchasing policy. Three of us were at the charter review committee first meeting where there was a discussion centered around our purchasing policy, where it appears in the charter and whether it should be in the charter at all, or whether that should be a policy established by the, this board, the select board. And the result of that discussion was, is that the charter review members, if I remember this Keith correctly, wanted to see some policy that we might in fact develop before they decided how to move forward on that. My suggestion to the, the committee was that right now in the charter, our $5,000 threshold where we're supposed to go out to the bid process is for some reason, under the duties of the town manager, which didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, that should be, I think, a board of selectmen's responsibility. And then I too voiced the opinion that we shouldn't have a number in the charter because then that doesn't leave us some flexibility to deal with emergencies like we did with the town hall when it was struck and, and other circumstances where we may have to not go out to bid because the circumstances dictate otherwise. So, so that, that's, that's the ongoing discussion, but they, as I said, the, the end result was they wanted to see a policy, I guess Keith has found something here which we all should review. And maybe at the next meeting, we can go over it and see what we think about it or maybe there's other suggestions or options that folks might have.
If, if you want to see other options, I certainly, I, I looked at Kennybunks, the ones that I could find, Bridgeston, Maine had one, City of Saco had one online, the city of Ellsworth, Maine had one online and the city, in the town of Harrison, Maine had one online. So those are the ones that I grabbed real quick.
Okay.
And I sort of, as all good managers do, I plagiarized and grabbed some things that I thought were appropriate out of a bunch of these and tried to keep it a small and simple document. Some of the ones particularly, as you can imagine, the city of Saco had pretty extensive purchasing policy, which I think probably is not something that we actually need, but if you think so, I can share it.
Well, everybody review and we'll take it up next time, well, I guess that's the, where the charter review is December 1st, I think, right?
Yes.
So we won't have this for them then, so we'll just have to table the issue on, as far as the charter is concerned.
Correct.
Sure, there'll be other discussions that will take up the meeting time.
Can I just ask a quick question, Tom?
Yep, sure.
So kind of just going through this real quick, it looks like Keith, just help me understand here, we've got an informal, we've got a formal which have dollar amounts, but the emergency doesn't, right? If we determine something is an emergency, there's no dollar amount, but everything else is broken up to a formal and informal.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think just in reading this real fast, we're going to have to, I, I think tailor this more to the fact that we don't spend anybody's money, that's got to first be approved by the town. So the board of selectmen can't approve an expenditure if the, that's already have to be approved or whatever policy we put in place is to effectuate essentially what the town has authorized us to do and then we go out to the bid process. But, so I think when you read through this, you got to.
Got to add that.
You got, you got to keep that in mind.
Good start.
Okay, I unfortunately have a resignation of Todd Shea from the school board. That means I think that this board is going to be, is going to have to soon appoint, try to find an appointee to take his spot or the remainder of his term. Does anybody know of anybody interested in?
What, what, we, we posted it last time on a website, right? That we will look in and.
I think so. Yeah, and Jack was very instrumental of securing somebody for our school board member. You, you do know that Todd Shea resigned, correct? Yeah. I, I don't know if you have, oh, there was. Okay. Yeah, come on up, Jack.
Jack Reed. There, there were two resignations the same night, I'm told, after the end of the school board meeting. One was Todd Shea, and the other was Amanda Oldslager from Kenbuck. And my understanding is that in both cases, the, the reason was that their workload on their jobs was just too heavy and, and this was too much to carry. Todd, as you know, runs Kenbuck by power, and I guess they've had lots of activity, and so he, I haven't talked to him, but that's, that's what I heard secondhand from a good source. As far as Amanda goes, she apparently is with the Maine Maritime Logistics. And is a senior person in that organization. And they're, they're busy trying to straighten out getting product moved around the nation. So they have a problem as well. I am trying to work with several people to come up with potential candidates. And perhaps you have some ideas too. So I hope you can hold off for maybe up to thirty days. I think you've got to do something, and there may be no candidates. I don't know. It's, it's a tough job. At last, at the school more board meeting last Monday, the Steve Bailey, who's the director of the Maine School Management, came down and they talked about the strategic plan and about the roles of, of school board members. And it's it's a tough job and a lot to learn. Takes a long time and a whole lot of hours of commitment at the committee level as well as the bi-weekly meetings. I hope we can come up with somebody who's good.
Yeah.
Well, we'll definitely need to advertise like we did last time as soon as we can here and try to see if we get any interested parties, interested members, I mean, not parties.
I, I, I would volunteer for that.
You do enough, Jack.
I'm about volunteered out. My daughter-in-law works for the school district, so by definition, there's potential conflict of interest there. There, there really isn't, but there's. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Keep your eyes and ears open, folks.
Yeah.
Talk it up.
And I truly don't want to wait too long because that's, you know, we're an important, we only got three members to begin with, and if we're down to two, our voting rights really hurt, so.
I agree. I'll, we'll get something on the, on the website tomorrow.
Yep.
After I speak with a clerk to determine Todd's, how long his service was and what his expiration date is to his position, then we'll go from there.
Let me know as soon as you put something up on the website, because I'll post it out also on the Rundle chat.
Okay.
So we have a, a Rundle rep resigning? Ira Kemp was resigning too.
He's necessarily resigning?
No, he's not, he's not. Right. He didn't resign, yeah.
He didn't resign.
No. Ira.
Ira's not running again.
Yeah, he didn't resign, but he's just not gonna run again.
When his term is up, he's not. Yeah, he's the head of the finance.
Finance, yeah.
All right. Juneteenth.
Yeah, this was, this was brought to my attention, and you know, obviously sometimes I don't give these things the, the due diligence that they're, that they should be given, but back in June tenth of twenty twenty-one, the governor approved a new paid state holiday of Juneteenth to be added. And I'm not sure the position of the board of selectmen in terms of adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday for municipal staff. So that's why I sort of put it out here for discussion.
Does this affect we've worked at the state shutdown, like the registrations still get handled?
No, you're, you're hitting the nail right on the head. We could be here and we couldn't do, if, there wouldn't be any contact to the state because they'd be on the, they'd have the holiday. What it, essentially what it would be is if you decided to approve it, we would have to add it as, onto our personnel policy as a recognized holiday and then act accordingly with that.
But if somebody wanted to come in and register their vehicle, pay their taxes, that can still happen, right?
Yeah.
The only thing is, is if they have to contact the state for anything, then it wouldn't happen.
Correct.
And how often does that happen on a day-to-day basis? Probably not very much.
I think they're calling the state fairly regularly to, to answer questions if they need to. It's nice to have the resource available, but we're only, we're talking one day.
One day, right.
Right.
The building would remain open? And the people would still be here on that holiday?
Well, if you, if, if you don't provide it to them, yes, they would be here. It would not be a holiday that we would recognize, and it wouldn't be added to our personnel policy.
We recognize all the rest of these.
And then it would be, if we authorize it, the building would be closed?
That is correct.
And we're closed every Friday already.
June nineteenth would fall on a, on a Sunday, so technically we would, we would recognize it on Monday, the twentieth for next year.
That would mean that week we'd only be open three days.
It'd be open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, yeah.
I, I'm gonna make a motion that we do not honor it as a holiday for the town of Arundel.
Any second for that motion?
What is, what are they trying to record that? I forget. What is it?
I don't want to misspeak. I don't recall, quite frankly.
It's, I think it's a civil rights thing, isn't it Tulsa? Whatever happened, I forgot the exact.
We can, we can look it up real quick.
I mean, we don't have to make this decision today, tonight, if you want to get some more information about what it is, what it represents. Maybe you support it, maybe you don't.
Now, what's the?
And what it is, is a federal holiday in the United States commemorating the emancipation of African-American slaves.
Oh, that's right.
Is also observed for celebrating African-American culture originating in Galveston, Texas. Has been so celebrated annually on June nineteenth in various parts of the United States since eighteen sixty-five.
I've heard the reference before of like floating holidays, like I think Veterans Day, or maybe it's not Veterans Day, but like some, some companies or municipalities have used the holidays as floating holidays. Like if we adopted this holiday as a floating holiday, what, what does that necessarily mean? So like, like let's say Thanksgiving falls on a Thursday and I know we're not typically open Fridays, but could you basically buy June nineteenth to close on that Friday after a holiday like that? Is that, is that how that works?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure.
We would have to develop a policy for floating holidays.
Correct.
We don't have a policy.
We don't have a policy for.
It's what, like you could use the holiday on a different, is that right?
Right. Like for us, when, when they've enacted it in my company, you know, you get X amount of floating holidays, you can use it whenever you want, but you have, you know, with your supervisor's approval, you, you can use it and it's considered a floating holiday.
And it's, it's as a company as a whole, or as, as an individual?
Individual, I think.
So.
That's what I would see it, a floating holiday.
Right.
I can take it anytime I need it.
You could take it Monday, I could take it Tuesday, you could take it whatever.
I, I mean, I know you already have a motion, but we can finish that motion. I, I would be in favor of maybe something like that, I guess, not necessarily to just totally disregard the holiday, but maybe.
How many A holidays do we have now?
I think we have either twelve or thirteen. Well, I don't hear, I don't hear a second for it, Mr. Chairman, so I think it dies for lack of a second. So do you want to sort of table it and, and give it some more thought, and I can look at Jason's thoughts in terms of floating holidays. Take a look at that and maybe come back with some sort of. We can talk about it again?
I, I, I'd be inclined to go for a floater versus closing the whole building down for another day. And, and people can use it whenever they want it. I, I might buy into that.
The only thing that maybe, you know, if we create a policy, you know, maybe, I don't know if you could word it to, to, to the effect of so many people can't take the same day, you know what I mean? So that you don't end up having to close the building because there's only one person here. I'm sure we could cover, but somehow with some verbiage there.
What's that?
And we do not cover it like you said.
I guess I'd have to think about it. You'd have to establish that it's a holiday first.
Right.
And then they say Juneteenth is a holiday, but you don't have to take it on.
Right.
June nineteenth.
It would be a floating holiday, but it would be a floating holiday in, in observance of June, June nineteenth.
I thought we already voted this in as a holiday. When was the holiday that we voted in?
We'd have to say something that.
No, we didn't vote any. I think that, I, I think last, I don't know, maybe they, maybe we just gave it to, I don't recall us doing anything with Juneteenth last year.
I think it was a store this came to us. Sounds familiar. Maybe it was, was, would they have come to us or to go to the state to, to vote on this at all?
I don't, no, I don't think so. I don't, you know, I, I think this just got enacted this year.
It did.
It did, yeah.
So it's not something that's been hanging out there for.
Right, it just got approved by the governor on June tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Right.
It went through, it went through review back in January of twenty twenty-one by the state.
How many states recognize Juneteenth as a holiday?
No idea. And now, now all I know is that the state of Maine does.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's table it and think about it, right? And maybe if you get some time, if you can come up with some of the verbiage for this policy or floating holidays. I mean, I don't know whether that'll apply to all of them, or Phil said, and Jason, we can't have the building empty because everybody chooses same day, you know?
It almost, it almost be by providing another personal day.
Right.
For somebody to take when they say, in lieu of, in lieu of establishing it as a holiday, use it as established as a personal day.
Right.
Because right now, I think, I think if we do that, we want to be clear that it's in, in observance of, of Juneteenth, right? Instead of just giving them another, another personal day or whatever. It needs to be a separate policy that the town of Arundel will honor the Juneteenth, however, it's a floating or a personal day. I think it needs to be clear on why we're giving that extra day.
Let me see if I, let's see if we can get some verbiage, perhaps.
State buildings will all be closed, right?
Oh, yeah.
And the floating holiday, when they, they don't have it all the time with my company, but every once in a while they have it, and some of them were paid, some of them were not paid, but it's with supervisor's approval, so that not to the point that Phil or Jason, you know, not, not everybody or two or three key important people are out at the same time. So it's, it's done with supervisor approval.
Yeah, that, that basically happens now for, for vacations and things like that.
Right.
You know? But, yeah, I understand the concern. What I'm, what I'm hearing around the table tonight is that you're concerned about losing another day of office being open to the public if we can sort of find another way to, to do this.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's only other towns around us observing it on that one day. If so, would we be the only ones still open?
Well, they'll come, they'll come to us like they do for the dump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The dump's becoming more and more of a problem.
Biggest problem in town.
We're gonna have that curbside, for sure.
Okay, moving on, we have a notice of a dangerous building.
Yeah, provided to you a report that were received from the Maine Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Child and Family Services in reference to a piece of property here in Arundel that unfortunately had children living in at the time. DHS has taken the position that the children no longer will reside there, and after I had an opportunity to review some of the photographs and also speak to our staff, both from the fire department and from the from code as well as police that have been to this building, that we may have to take some action. Everybody's of the opinion that the building is uninhabitable and perhaps is dangerous. And as a result of that, we may have to take some action relative to either securing it or raising it to ensure that nobody's gonna live in it any longer. Oftentimes, as you well know, folks have different preferences of how they live. And some folks may find this habitable. Others may not. I'd be one that would say, no, it's not inhabitable for me. But I'm very delicate to the situation that taking somebody's or, or destroying or taking down somebody's property is a pretty serious thing. So I think that we're here with this one. It looks at pretty significant to me that we should probably take some action. But there's a process, as we did with the property on Campground Road. We have to provide notice and hearings and those, those types of actions need to take place. In this case, I don't believe that these folks have the financial wherewithal to to spend any money, to do any corrective actions on their own on this property. So it's going to be up to the town to, if you decide to do that, to, to understand that you'll have a financial obligation here that obviously can be leaned on the, on the property once it's clean, but that there'll be some money that we will have to incur to take care of this situation. So that's why it's here in front of you. Not quite sure where you want me to proceed, if you want me to to start going down the the process of notification and so on and so forth to try to get the proper procedure in place to have the authority to take some action on this building.
So the state has already taken the children out of the building?
Yeah, as, as I understand, right? Yeah, as, as I understand right now, nobody's living in the facility. Nobody's there.
So, even the adults are out of it?
Yeah, there were four adults and two children that were residing there.
And I think we need to definitely start taking some, whatever the process is that we start. Whatever steps we have to take, but start at step one and, and go through the process.
Well, I think you've got to select the process first. There's about three of them, the, different ways that this can be done. Some involve the court, some do not. Uh, I think we probably need advice of counsel, probably as how best to proceed and most expeditiously, so to speak. Uh, going to court is going to be a problem, folks. I mean, you just can't get in court. Um, so, I mean, even in this circumstance, I don't think a judge is going to pick this up, but.
So, intent to eliminate this building entirely, because I, I don't think cleaning this out, I don't think you're going to get anywhere, like, loading trash and hauling it off. I mean, you're still going to be stuck with an abandoned building that is uninhabitable, and we, we know, we all know right now, we're never going to see out of this.
No.
So.
No, I think this is a, I think this is a, if you get involved, it's a raise of that building.
Yeah.
And it's a cleaning of the property. If you haven't been down there, and we don't have photographs for you, but, uh, if you've been by the property, you, you know the accumulation of material outside would constitute a junkyard. So, I think you have two issues here. I think you have a dangerous building, and then you have a junkyard that needs to be cleaned as well. So, I think they, and I, your suggestion of getting the attorney involved, because I think we have to cut both of them together at the same time as we go through this process.
Yep.
Unfortunately, I've been inside this building. It's not appealing.
To say the least.
But I just don't know, um, like, I think, it's, it's an open-ended question, but, so we get everything off this property, that we, are we now obligated to provide adequate residence for these people to move back to their property? That has nothing to do with us at all?
No.
No.
Other than general, general assistance.
Right.
Qualified for.
General assistance, or, i- i- the only thing to be, would be probably a lien on the property.
Right.
Based on whatever cost we incurred, and as you suggest, whether we ever receive the lien money back, not sure. There is a process and procedure that can be followed on that.
Oh, yeah.
So, should we talk to the town attorney first to see which is the easiest, well, easiest, which is the?
I think so.
Better way for us to proceed?
Right.
I think there's a lot. You know, Jason?
I, I'm done, I don't know.
Oh.
I don't think it's that big.
See, it's.
Value?
The town, the tax map is here.
It's on, yeah, it should be on the tax map.
Uh, two point, no, one, 1.1 acres, am I reading that right?
Assessment, something.
1.14 acres, maybe?
Yeah, 1.14 acres. 560, just barely over an acre.
Okay.
That's our, that's our three, which is barely over an acre. I mean, it's, it's an acceptable.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a lot of record, though, correct?
Yep.
So.
Now, our three is three acres.
I think it's three, it's three acres.
Yeah, this, the, the quitclaim deed says, it says 2.14 acres.
It does?
Yeah. Quitclaim deed says containing 2.14 acres.
I don't see it on the tax card as being 2.14, maybe you missed it.
But it says there on the quitclaim deed.
I want to say, um, this residence is at their next door, so I'm wondering if what you're seeing is like the original.
Well, this quitclaim deed was registered in March 2nd of 2018.
I want to say, like, either one of their parents or uncle or something is next door, or it probably was all one piece of it.
Oh, and then they broke it out? Yeah.
Got a, I think I have a, I think I threw a, um, copy of the tax map in here, too. Let me see if I did.
Is it right here?
Uh, no, that's a tax card. I thought I threw a map in there, too.
I didn't see the map, but.
Maybe I have it in the file. Yes, I have it in the file. It, the file lists as 2.14 acres, the tax map. Tax ma, uh, map, one lot 13.
Yeah, that's what it says in the deed.
Okay. So, it's 2.14. So, is the, is the sense that I should just contact the attorney and come up with some sort of plan and present the plan to you folks to see if it's something that you, you feel is appropriate to move forward with?
Yeah, I think that's, that's where we head.
All right.
Okay, uh, before we get on to the approval of the payable warrant, um, we had a meeting earlier this evening with, uh, Chair of the School Board, Mr. Arla Blank, Superintendent, Ira Camp was there, Jen Shay was there, Keith and I, and two attorneys from Drummond Woodson. As you probably know, Drummond Woodson represents the school board, and of course, there are attorneys as well. What we're trying to do is see if we can come up with some agreement that's going to satisfy the state in terms of, I don't know if you remember when Jen was explaining this issue between what she has to do with respect to COVID, uh, standard operating procedures and quarantining kids as opposed to some school, um, you know, and so she was trying to get, see if she can, our REAP program, still run by us, um, get as, named a school-based program, so she has to only comply with the school COVID standard operating procedures, which are less restrictive in terms of, uh, how much time the kid has to spend if they, you know, you've got these pool testings and, you know, contact tracing and all that sort of stuff, and how much time the kid would have to be quarantined right now. She's a community-based program, it would be 10, 10 days, I think. Um, in school, they don't have to do it, and of course, it doesn't make any sense, because the, the kids are in school, you know, the program's in school. Um, so it's all the same kids, uh, you know, if, if in fact, the kid comes into contact because they're in a REAP program, they treat it differently in terms of coming back to school than if she was a school-based program. So, we met, and we're trying to see if we can come to some agreement that we can put together that'll pass muster at the state level, wherever that has to be. Nobody's exactly sure where you go to get approvals, apparently. Um, everybody looks, looks like they kicked the bucket around, uh, between DOE, um, Senate, these controls.
Yeah, CDC and DHS.
Services.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, that's what we need to figure out. But, um, one concern for council was, and it's a good one, is the, the potential conflict issue. We had Leah here, um, with Peter Flemling, I didn't know him, but, uh, um, and they're willing to, I mean, we've got the same goal in place, okay? I mean, there's really no, no disagreements, it's not adversarial in any way, shape, or form. Everybody's on the same page, we're just trying to get to an agreement or some operating contract or something that'll pass state muster and therefore allow Jen's program to be a school-based program. Curiously, nobody knows what that means, because there's no definition of school-based program that anybody can find. So, nobody knows what it is, but we can't get CDC, apparently, to say that we are or aren't. Um, so, anyway, council needs to, uh, have our consent to proceed, um, with them representing both us and the school board in this endeavor. Um, I made the representation, uh, that I didn't think our huge folks, our board, would have any issue with that, as I said, but I don't see any adversarial proceeding anywhere down the road between us and, and the school board on this, on this issue whatsoever. Um, but, so, I, we went forward with the meeting, we came up with some parameters, they're going to start to put together an agreement, or at least try to give a first pass at some levels at the state to see what kind of response they get or reaction they get, and then come back to us and, and try to figure out what we can do to maybe satisfy concerns if there are concerns, and we don't even know that yet. So, so, but, what I want to do is get a vote for this board that you are, we give consent to our attorney, Leah Drummond Woodson, to represent us in this endeavor, along with knowing that, uh, the school board is represented by another member of Drummond Woodson, and, uh, so, and they're going to email me tomorrow, or Keith tomorrow, I'm not sure which, maybe both of us.
Yeah, I think both of us.
Um, and ask that, you know, we, they, we give that informed consent. Um, so I need a motion and a vote if.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion that we give consent to, to work with the attorneys to develop an MOU.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussions, questions? It's not all in favor? Okay.
So, so I take it the, the DOE been non-committal, or they come back and reject it?
No DOE, it's, it's, it's not in our ballpark. It's not something we're going to decide.
Right. They're not taking any responsibility of it all.
It's not in our jurisdiction.
Right.
I guess CDC won't say anything, and.
Right, they, their, their position is, they, they have their SOPs, that's what they're going to go by no matter what.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
Unbelievable.
They're going to try to go up the chain, I think, at, uh, human services.
Yeah.
Find out if there's somebody up there who can make a decision.
Yeah, good luck to us.
Sheesh, no kidding, huh?
Yeah, it's really. So, but.
Yep.
You got it. Yeah. Okay, um, we have just a payable, Morris? All in favor? Any other business, folks?
Just real quick update on the microphones. Um, I got in contact with him this week and, uh, last week, and it looks like, uh, probably January now, so, I mean, it's just, the whole supply chain is that way now. Anything electronics is.
Yeah, have you seen the, the ships that are still at sea trying to get rid of goods?
Crazy. Make a motion, we're done.
All in favor?
What was the time?
8:02.
8:02 PM.